Okay, I'm calling to order the Denali Borough Planning Commission regular meeting. It is six oh seven. And can we have a roll call please?
Susan Brock. Eric Cowan. Steve Jones.
Here.
Mark McKee. Dexter Rooster.
Here.
James Ward.
Here.
Yes, okay.
Here.
Eric did let you know that he worked today and helped doing it as soon as he could.
And Mark let us know, right?
Mark, that's how that he put.
That he wouldn't give them make it.
Move to use Susan.
Second.
Anyone object? Okay, she's accused too. All right, are there any public comments?
Well, no public comments. My name is David Coleman, my little peely. I used to know where I live, I used to live on the last house on the left on Auto Lake Road. And somehow, the last three houses on the Auto Lake Road have now become an invisible street named Mackey Road. So Auto Lake, like the pavement, you get on Auto Lake and the pavement goes to the end on the last house on the lake on Auto Lake Road. So, uh, I went, and if you look at this first picture, I went to find out the start of Mackey Road where you guys put a sign. And you can see the hiking trail, the little dirt road that's Mackey Road, and it keeps, it keeps coming around. I could barely squeeze my car through it. And then that picture down here in the middle, that's the Lakeview Road, but if I'm driving down Mackey Road, there's nothing for me to stop or yield or anything. I'm just driving. Somebody's coming down the hotel road, no signage. And then we get down to where the public boat launch is, and now Mackey Road and Auto Lake Road, and there's five roads, all convenient right there. With no stop signs, no signage, except for kids at play, which there's tons of kids at play. And the far picture on the right is the last 200 feet of Auto Lake Road that somehow has become Mackey Road. So I think it's just probably a mistake, and those last three houses with pavement on Auto Lake Road should be Auto Lake Road. And I think you guys got some serious signage issues, especially coming out of your public boat launch. It, in my opinion, Mackey Road just shouldn't exist because it's not there. It's imaginary. It's a hiking trail. It's a four, and it's important, it's a, uh, four-reeler trail. And, um, I think it's dangerous, and, um, I'm not really sure why we got cut up. Why, why the last three houses on Auto Lake Road got picked on and got cut off? But, um, I have a vacation rental there, so what's going to happen is Siri's going to eventually pick up the roads. And then my guests are going to be the ones stuck where my car is on this hiking trail. And I could tell them, oh, okay, don't listen to Siri, just follow my directions. And, um, but still, it's going to take them right through this path. So I'm curious if you guys are planning to build this road? Or do something with this road because there's nothing on it? Or I would suggest maybe, uh, just getting rid of Mackey Road and just letting Auto Lake Road be Auto Lake Road. It's one continuous piece of pavement to the end. And, um, I've watched, I've watched your boat launch now that you got a four-way intersection going right through it. And I'm not sure where else to go. I called Borough Staff and they told me to come here. So, um, I'd never dreamed that the last three houses on Auto Lake Road would be cut off. So it just, I wasn't following along, so, um, that's where we're at. And I don't know if there's anything that could be done. But I appreciate any help, and I think you guys should watch those blind intersections, no stop signs and no yield signs and no, no way to know that anybody's coming from any other way. Thank you for your time.
All right, thanks, Dave.
Public comment?
Yes.
Sorry, Peter, I was about to say you're downstairs. Oh, gee, this is in regards to the resolution on.
Tell who you are.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
Okay, my name is Mike Davis, one of the owners of Denali ATV.
Okay.
And this is in regards to the resolution to name our road easement Wilderness Way. Is that same name right there? And, uh, we're so appreciative that you selected one of our five names. We're just wondering if, uh, we had a couple others we submitted. We're just wondering if those could be utilized rather than Wilderness Way. We're the, we own both sides of that easement. We're the only business there. So we're just wondering if it would be possible to name it Denali ATV Drive or ATV Drive instead of Wilderness Way. And again, we're the only business there. The easement goes through both sides of our property.
That's where I have all sources.
So that's all we're, I don't know. Asking.
Okay.
Check turn out?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. All right, any other public comment?
Uh, yeah, second. I do see Mr. Joe Garner, and he did submit a written public comment, so.
Yeah, I was just wondering if you were going to read that. Yeah, thanks.
Like me to read it, or did you want to recap it?
You can go ahead and read it.
It says, um, Mr. Joe Garner, KJ Field Road. I have concerns about Alingna subdivision going in close proximity to the KJ Field Road. Um, I have expert opinion as a pilot that I hope you will take into consideration. KJ Field is an active runway and currently manageable for safe operation. However, I have major safety concerns if there are homes put in west of the runway. Putting in more homes would take away a major safety buffer should I have an in-flight emergency at the takeoff. Also, more homes, um, unaffiliated with the airstrip would increase the potential for more foot traffic, ATV and Stoneville traffic to enter the runway, which would pose a major hazard. Also, and, um, also of note would be the concerns of homeowners being negatively impacted from the noise of the aircraft flying overhead. I understand the need for housing, so I propose a solution. I suggest the area currently under discussion to be used as a future Healy regional airport to instead be considered for the primary area for a housing subdivision. As a radar operator out of their Space Force Station and a pilot, I think it would be a wasted effort to build a regional airport in Healy in the proposed location due to the flight restrictions at their Space Force Station. These flight restrictions would make flight operations of large aircraft out of Healy nearly impossible and would make the proposed location as a regional airport utterly useless. I think that this land would be better suited for a subdivision than a regional airport, which would eliminate the safety concerns and have an overall lesser negative impact. Thank you, Joe Garner.
Thank you.
So yeah, if you have any questions, I can answer.
Does anyone have questions for Joe?
Not this time.
Joe, are you going to stick around for the meeting?
Uh, yes, I can.
All right, yeah, we might have something else later on. It's, um, I don't know that that's on our agenda.
It's not.
Um, but there's a, there's a time for commissioner comments, and so we might, um, we might comment on it and, um, so, uh, so yeah, I encourage you to stick around.
Okay.
Okay, um, approval of the agenda, is that a motion?
Move to approve.
Okay.
Anyone have any objections with approving the agenda? Right? So the, uh, I'll call that unanimous in the agenda sets. Um, there are motions to approve the minutes of previous meeting?
Okay.
Second.
Um, any objections to approve the minutes of the July 19th meeting? Hey, I call that unanimous.
I don't think you'll be able to get it.
Okay, um, there are no communication and appearance requests. So, um, Community Development Director report.
Evening, I was going to sit there, but I don't think you can hear me with the rain from over there. All right, a couple of things to update the group on. Um, we are working with DOT right now to get an MOA in place for that 2.18 million federal allocation we received for the design and engineering of separated bike paths. Um, we did submit another congressionally directed spending request to continue that work. Uh, and Murkowski's team in the Appropriations Committee included 0.64 million in this coming um, federal budget, um, to do more design engineering of those separated pathways. We'll find out over the coming months if that does stay in the federal budget. Um, and it would get us to about 2.8 of the 4.65 million needed to do the design and engineering from Stampede Road down to Catalina. Um, just a reminder that both the 2.18 and this 0.64 million have a federal nexus attachment to them. So looking at separated bike paths that involve connections to and through National Park Highway lands. Um, staying on the DOC topic, I'm just getting, helping get the word out that there's statewide transportation improvement program. Um, for the coming three years is open for public comments. That'll be open through early September. Um, if anyone did want to review that, it is on their website. The upcoming project in the Denali Borough is reconstruction of mile post 206, 209, which are those frostweeds at past breeding. Wow. The Alaska Long Trail Coalition last month and did finalize the, the name that will be used going forward for that effort. And it is now the Alaska Traverse, or AKT. And so for coming for this Denali area is a, will be a regional working group that'll work with Alaska Trails and the AKT Coalition um, to start, you know, working with different land managers on, and how that might look for this Denali Borough and how that would be part of the larger connection to. Um, and then we did, um, receive 245 responses from our community after recreation survey. Um, and so those will be, um, shared with the public in the coming months, um, hopefully sooner than that. Um, in the, in the next month would be my goal. We're still working on aggregating the data. Um, but I can, um, email you all, um, some of those rough numbers. Um, the ones that I wanted to share, let me pull it up quickly, is we had people, um, in the survey, they could share their top, we asked them to pick five out of the list of if they could choose any recreation option for the borough, what would their top five selections be? And so the, um, ones that were ranked in the top 10, and keep in mind, the, I'll name more than 10 because there was a three-way tie for the 10th ranked option. With fitness center, highway bike paths, um, and ice rink improvements split between covered or indoor. Groom ski trails, new and existing trailheads, shooting range, community sidewalks, mountain biking paths, community garden, rock climbing wall, Alpine hiking trails, and tracks and track and sports fields. Um, so those public comments are what the Recreation Committee is moving forward with as it continues the Community After Recreation planning process. And I'm happy to answer any questions on any of that information.
Are there any questions for Theresa?
Yeah.
So I lost kind of track here in my mind. Yeah. So when did, where did the indoor fitness center rank on this?
It was ranked number one. It had the most.
Indoor fitness, that's right.
Yeah, a fitness center. So, but it had the most, um, let's see, it had 133 people selected it out of 245 as one of their top five. So full, full survey results will again be shared. We're just working on aggregating the data, both with all survey responses and then breaking it down by community.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, Mayor's report?
Thank you. Um, you do have the written report in your packet. It's, it's the report I generate monthly, you know, for the assembly and starts off with, uh, an update at the time I wrote it on the Anderson complex fires. And at this point, you know, especially with all this rain coming down right now, um, it's really time to thank, uh, all the responders and the incident management team for all their good work. Uh, protecting our community through the fire, the fire is, is, um, you know, uh, waning in terms of the threat levels and our, and our, our evacuation levels are correspondingly going down, going in the right direction. Um, and so much of their work, not only to protect, you know, structures and assets and infrastructure, um, specifically around those buildings, but to create those, those fire breaks and enlarge those fire breaks around the whole city of Anderson. And, and the whole Clear Space Force Station is really important and, and, and lasting work. So, you know, again, really, uh, want to thank everybody involved in the, the big response to the Anderson complex fires. And, um, let's see, city of Anderson updates, there's some changes up there in terms of leadership and, and service and even, uh, you know, staffing. Um, I provided a little street addressing update to the Assembly. Marshall will provide that to you guys, uh, this evening. And that, that, that's continuing as, you know, reported to the Assembly how, you know, when you put up that many signs and, and, uh, there are going to be a few issues and things to be checked for accuracy, and we have a running list of things to correct. Um, then next we've got a few solid waste updates. Um, boy, the landfill just looks so good at our inspection, the DC inspection on August 3rd from almost no wind-blown litter, well-covered active pits and well-managed segregated materials. And thank all the solid waste staff. And there's, you know, a big capital purchase. It's actually the biggest capital purchase in the history of the Denali Borough just took place. You know, a few weeks ago, when, when the D8 that we've been planning on replacing for many years, um, finally arrived. It was a purchase that we put off when COVID hit. And, um, we got back on that horse to replace the workhorse of our landfill, uh, the big V8 dozer that, you know, we, it was really on its third, at the end of its third life, you know, it's a 1997 model that we bought. And I think it was, we bought it in 09 when Fairbanks was done with it. And, um, so, uh, we have, have a brand new 2023. Um, D8 with all the new bells and whistles and, and even safety equipment. It'll be a real help up there. And, um, and it's going to serve, serve our people, serve, serve waste management here well for many, many years. And we don't owe a dime on it, don't have a note at all, paid for it in cash after saving and planning for it for many years. Um, to continue our, our fiscal position that I sometimes like to brag a little bit on, how we don't even have a car payment. Um, and speaking of, that's the kind of the next thing in a, in my report is, uh, audit work going into, as, uh, the audit, as we wrapped up our fiscal year, and we've got a good plan in place. And we're starting to look at the preliminary 23 numbers, and they look great. They look very strong, especially because some of that relief that we received, the local government loss revenue replacement funds over $3 million were realized as income in this fiscal year. So that combined with strong tax receipts or did result in what's going to be, you know, our, the final numbers aren't, aren't in, but it's going to be a record year for revenue. Um, and, um, so while this fiscal year was tight on, on our budget and a very constrained budget with very little headroom between our forward funding number and, um, uh, you know, very little room for, for anything additional based on the forward funding, uh, formula. Forward funding should result in some, you know, uh, some availability, um, in the coming years. Um, so, um, things are looking good there. And yeah, happy to have the congressionally directed spending, uh, that we've already received. And then the next bit that's, that, uh, 0.64 million advanced through Appropriations Committee, we're hopeful for more design work of those roadside trails, roadside paths that we, that we desperately need here, where so many people are walking in our ditches. Um, a couple of activities I attended, the 100th anniversary of the railroad, really good event. Really kudos to the Alaska Railroad for serving Alaska and its ongoing development for, for 100 years. It's a big milestone. And, um, and a couple additional things for you guys that I've done, don't have in the written report. I did get a section 106 consultation. That's, that's kind of cultural and historical consultation on federal, uh, federally funded projects. Um, for a potential Alaska Railroad, um, kind of a man camp project, or they're calling it their operations, um, operations project that, that would support, is operations support, operate, support their operations here. And, um, so I'm going to provide some, some comment on that. Um, and really, one thing I want to just kind of flag for you guys, it's not going to be next month or anything, but I, I would expect that looking at the, the scope of the project, that it would likely trigger our conditional use permit. Um, which we really haven't exercised since we put it in place. And, um, I expect that, that that would be coming your way in the future for that potential project. It looks like a, a, a good project. Um, and, um, do want to also let you know that, you know, give interior surveying a, um, a deadline that was agreed upon deadline in terms of, um, getting in the, the Pangini B, um, survey that's long overdue. And, um, that sort of, that deadline was not met, and we'll be taking the next steps on that unfortunately. Um, because we do need that Pangini B survey for the, the development, um, you know, of our, of our lands. And, um, so so that's where we are with that. And, um, that's what I've got for you and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Questions for the mayor?
This is kind of goes back to highway stuff.
Sure.
So has there ever been any talk, any music, any of this, doing something like by, uh, Little Dry Creek Bridge? Slough?
The Dry Creek Bridge is definitely a, the Slough Bridge, that is not Dry Creek Bridge, is Slough Bridge. Is a recognized hazard point.
Has it?
Pincher point, narrow.
It hasn't ever showed up on any of the plans or anything considered by DOT?
That bridge is not structurally deficient. Um, the bridge is fine, but yeah, in the planning, especially in terms of the PEL, and maybe Theresa, you could help me on this because it is addressed in the PEL. That's the Planning Environmental Linkage Study, um, that that is, you know, a danger spot basically. And how to get around that, and maybe it's not a, um, a, a rebuilt bridge, but maybe a trail around it. Um, but no, it's not on the strip right now. It's not on any plans right now.
I knew it was on the step, I started.
Step, um, because it's on the highway, wouldn't have qualified for the community transportation program or the transportation alternatives program. That was the state DOT grant cycle. We applied for earlier this year. Um, in the PEL, it is ranked as one of the high priorities, one of the five high priority projects. Um, it wraps in Healy, the main Healy intersection for, um, safety improvements. It extends out to the Slough and Dry Creek Bridges. So it is addressed in the PEL, the price point for that, um, project for those bridges, and then making the intersection is about $10 million. Um, but it is one of their high priority projects from the PEL, which, how that translates is that DOT, you know, says that it should be addressed in the next one to five years, but again, whether funding will come about for that is again, hard to know. And as you said, it's not in the step. Um, the step represents projects that have a source of funding identified, so.
Because there's a lot of people use that bridge walking back and forth every day.
Yeah.
And it has the narrowest, two Dry Creek Bridges have the narrowest
profile.
walking area on of any place. And naturally, it's on a corner, more or less. And you can't put it on the bottom part, it'll steep, you know, people are not going to walk, you know, you gotta walk down, but you have to basically go all the way to Evans Road before you come out. Can't do it on the other side because we got guardrails and stuff and muck. And then also somewhere along the line, I think does flow of water, water. So you're going to have to figure out something, but really, I mean, she does probably 50 or 100 people a day walk back and forth across that bridge. And people just go into the restaurant. You see people that are definitely not local employees that are dressed a little differently. That end up walking down there back and forth or whatever, you know. Uh, yes. We had one wreck there years and years ago, just the same thing. And it was kind of like, seems like most of the places on the highway have one or two accidents and they get fixed. Well, that had wrecked in a fatality long before some of these other ones got fixed, but they still never did it. So I mean, if it's to this point, I don't suppose they can possibly put a small catwalk bridge across there. I mean, of course, if you look in the community, you haven't tried to do that yet. But something on there, I mean, it's awfully narrow, you know.
Dexter, the, um, the design and engineering with those CDS funds is going to look at a separated path design and engineering for, for that stretch.
Okay.
Um, so that phase would at least be covered. And the other thing I didn't mention in my report is that, um, DOT is also undertaking interior Alaska transportation plan right now. Um, and those are the kind of comments that they would want to hear from the public. Um, and the Recreation Committee, one of the comments they made, DOT presented at our meeting on Monday, was that, um, you know, as, you know, having DOT considered, the comment was, when a bridge is being redone, why isn't a pedestrian component automatic? Why isn't that included in, um, bridge, um, work in Alaska? So the, it's the IATP, and so that's a, uh, the current vehicle to make comments for DOT on safety and needs of the interior.
So, you know. The other comment was that, so today I saw my third time the yellow lights have been on up at the intersection. I mean, all the time we've done that and forth, you know, we're only, I've only ever seen those lights these three times in the whole summer. That was a lot of money for whatever.
The flashing yellow?
Yep. You know what I mean?
Did not use very often, but yeah.
Not the one state true, pretty, well, you're more, yeah, I've been driving all summer and I've never seen them on yet. People go diagonal, people walk across. You know, lights are never on. So, anyway. No, I have to mainly worry about Dry Creek. That's I've seen some pretty close stuff on there, you know, so.
And they need basically fatality data or like injury kind of stuff in order for them to really bump it up because they know it's a safety, but until they really have that data to be like, oh, people are dying on this, it's a big safety issue. Because that was one of the things like when Princess moved in and we talked about the intersection here and the flashing lights is, you know, they came back and I'm like, well, there, there haven't been like a lot of accidents. There haven't been any fatalities. So we recognize it as an issue with all these people, but, you know, there's not the data to back it up so they can, I guess, have reason to justify, hey, you know, people are dying at this every month that it's got to be fixed.
Railroad crossing at Rex only had one fatality. They spent $7 million on that one. Monderosa only had two, and they spent seven, eight million a couple of years before on that one.
That might be a more of a federal-driven thing that they came out with, is the feds wanted to fix all that because of the railroads.
No.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh. Borough planner.
Um, so I'm continuing to address people residential properties and commercial. Um, I just want to thank all the people that have been patient through the process. Um, we've gotten quite a few applicants. Um, we've ordered about. You know, two hundred and five signs in the first round and a hundred and twenty six of them have been picked up. Um, I'm preparing the next order for the next um street addresses signs. Um, and. Um, well, I'll let you know when I do get in your address. Um, right now I sent out an email, but I'll start calling people, let them know. Um, there are people right now that are still out of town. There's no hurry to really pick them up, but. Um, and some people are waiting till school starts because then they'll be swinging by even more. Um, and um, so people can pick them up Monday through Thursday, nine to four. And if you can't make it during those times. Uh, just contact the office and we'll see if we can make arrangements um after hours or before. We open at nine. Um, I did yesterday, I submitted some stuff to Google to try to make them update their maps.
Oh.
Um, we'll see how it goes. I did in two different methods. One, I just went to like all the roads and tried to correct their orientation and alignment. Um, another one, I actually sent them my whole layer for like Healy to see how that works. Um, there was quite a few changes um that we've done in the area. So I just sent my road layer. To him and for Healy, but then like Catwell, I did individual streets updates. Um, I did some along the way from Catwell all the way up to uh Ferry. Just individually addressed kind of things changed it. Um, I did try to work on uh the one that um. Mister Coleman had mentioned is for whatever reason, two years ago, when I put out my initial map. Did you get public comment of, hey, this is how I believe the roads are aligned or these are the right ways? Google got a hold of that map and just started updating things. And one of the weird things was is like kind of where. Coleman talks about like Auto Lake is Auto Lake Road actually goes how they have it on Google. It goes down and then it actually goes out to where like uh Boghole or Carpet Road is out to Dry Creek. And then the rest of the down, which goes to the subdivision people is actually called Hilltop. And why they picked up Mackey at the beginning, but not on the bottom portion. Where I told them that they needed to delete what they have for as Mackey Road and actually put the correct orientation. Um, because it's they plotted right away for the whole thing, but. They do what they do and I know people have complained and it took me a while to figure out a method to maybe try to share information with them. And they need to verify it. Um, I don't know if the next step is actually getting. Um, a lot of times taking pictures of street signs. Cause then in that in their mind, they're like, okay, well, then it seems verifiable. Cause otherwise we're waiting for them to verify their data. Um, because they asked me questions when I tried to send them the road layer to make sure that I was a legitimate person to submit them that information. Um, cause otherwise, yeah, anybody can go onto Google Maps and try to make some changes. Um, I don't know how their system kind of works and how often they update stuff. A lot of stuff they may kind of ignore. Because they don't know how to verify it, like they don't send their Google car out to take pictures and all that in our area. Um, so still waiting on them. How to do it? And then I'm trying to figure out like trying to get it out to other G P S system companies and stuff like that. Um, and how to get other people to update it like Apple Maps and some of the other ones, but unfortunately they're outside of my. Control to make them have the correct information and where they even collect their information is interesting. Uh, cause we have a lot of B streets apparently in Healy. It seems to be a filler. If they didn't know a street name, they just made it B Street.
Interesting.
So that's about all I've been doing, working on addressing. Um, I've been working with Forest too on, you know. Making sure our orientation on street signs, they're actually viewable. We've had to correct a few relocate a few because they got put in some trees. Or you couldn't actually see them because they were twisted kind of the wrong way until you're on the road. Um, and we are uh still. Um, I think he was going to double check, but there's still a few road signs that they hadn't quite switched out yet or they haven't installed yet. I think they're getting pretty close to being done. With installation of signs.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Any questions for Marsha?
Well, I'd just like to say it's gone easier than I thought it was going to. I appreciate it.
It's still got some things that it is hard for a lot of the businesses. When the street signs kind of went up, things got confusing and it's still hard to tell them. And everybody is so set in their G P S systems. Um, that when you're not from here, they want to really use it and then they get confused.
So I have a question the about the planning conference.
Yes.
In September. Um, who is planning on going to that, do you know?
So far, I'm the only one that I know of. Um, I don't know of any other commissioners that had uh.
Is that closed?
Um, no, you could still sign up for it if you want. Um, there was um. There was just like a form online that gave like the travel authorization and that's just how like we would reimburse you and the approvals on that. Um, and to let people know that if you if you sign up for it and all this and then you can't go um that the. That you may have to pay for all the conference fees and stuff like that or travel costs that you were done, but there is a form on our websites. Um, that allows you to do that or you can contact uh Selena to to help make arrangements.
Can you remind of the dates of that? Is that the was it the twenty second and twenty third of September?
So it starts Wednesday the twentieth. Um, and it goes till the twenty second Friday. Um, I think. For being a group of planners, they kind of lack in the party planning area that. Like they didn't close their sessions until like the end of July, so they're still in the process of setting the sessions and stuff. Um, they'll have their general stuff like, you know, housing topics, ethics, that kind of stuff. Um, they will, they do have some walking tours kind of this year. A little more walking tours because since it's the um joint conference with the Western uh basically the Western planners conference, which is. All the states in the Western United States. Um, they do have uh some mobile tours that are going down in acres. I think they got like six of them. Um, like the bike paths that they have down there. They have um. A few bike paths, a few of the like uh rezoning classification type of stuff uh. And how they're redeveloping uh short term rentals and that kind of stuff in neighborhoods. Okay.
I'll go, but I don't need any housing or transportation.
Okay. And you wanted to sign up for all three days. Um, yes, this year they they didn't mention that they're like joining the doing the like commissioner training. Um, like they have in the past, they usually always kind of tacked on some commissioner training, but this year it doesn't look like they're planning on doing it.
All right, I I'm going to plan on signing up for that. Okay. And Baxter, I think you went to the you reported to the. Assembly meeting.
Yeah, um. The longest discussed topic, first topic. It's probably during public comments leading off to with the. Difference in the subdivision at Ignite. Started off with uh. Just, you know, not. Callers are are not too happy with the way we did it. Um, and there was a uh. Suggestion that most of the people in the borough do not know that there's a planning commission that exists. Okay, uh, that was put at ninety eight percent. And with all the forums and the surveys who've gotten back, that's quite a bit more than two percent. Um, when the major suggestions was. That it be moved out farther and there be a. Five hundred foot setback on the west side of the airstrip. Which is fair. And um, so I could be a relatively long discussion. And um. I left it, you know, so when you got down to the ordinances and stuff for the borough. I left that part and I went with the reports. So that's basically the. Wasn't too many questions otherwise on what was going on. Everybody seemed pretty happy, wasn't quite as short a meeting as the one before in Cantwell, but that's going to be a hard mean endeavor beat. Um, yeah. Guess that's about all I could tell you.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh.
Yeah.
I did touch on the fact that we've we've been walking around looking at sites since last year. Which have been on the agendas. For last year, you know, times we've been doing this, where the sites were that we went. And that we sometime along the line and we have stuff in the future. Discussion was that maybe a spending money on a. Uh. Serve not a survey, but the conceptual design. Was too soon that we should have talked to people more about they want that. But conceptual design is just a separate idea. To me, that's a good idea to do that first because otherwise nobody has any idea what you're talking about. So, yeah. Here we'll hear more more comments. Mm hmm.
Okay. Thank you. All right, uh, there are no flats and conditional uses. There's no unfinished finished business. So we are on to new business, resolution P C twenty three dash eleven. Is there a motion?
Move to adopt. So what's correct term now?
Move to approve.
Move to approve? Okay, move to adopt.
All right. Is there a second? All right, thank you, Steve. Okay, so is there any discussion on? This is a resolution for adopting street names for three unnamed streets. So this is for Zig Road, Barnum Loop and the Dream Avenue.
Interesting names.
Zig and Barnum are for sled dogs.
Wow.
Cause this is the Jeff King subdivision area.
Okay.
Okay.
So.
It's a theme in that subdivision.
Mm hmm.
Okay.
Anything? Any discussion? Okay. We can have a roll call vote on this.
Resolution twenty three dot eleven?
Yes.
James Ward?
Yes.
Baxter Mercer?
Yes.
Yes.
Eric Houghgan?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's unanimous.
Okay, the next one is resolution twenty three twelve. It's a resolution to change adopted street names. So this is the one with. Uh, changing Snowy Owl Lane to Odakirk Lane. And changing Warring Loop. And since it's not a loop, it would be North. Oh, the North Street would be Warring Drive and the Southern Street would be Squirly Drive.
Oh. I'd like to note that the Squirly Drive name is in honor of Shirley Hamel. And her family supports that name.
And I, sorry, I didn't ask, I I need a motion.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Thank you. All right.
So there's no been no objection? Miss? No.
Great. Yes. Any discuss any discussions? Let's see. Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Resolution twenty three three twelve. Eric Houghgan?
Yes.
Yes.
Baxter Mercer?
Yes.
James Ward?
Yes.
Catch?
Yes.
Man on us.
All right, P C twenty three thirteen. This is a resolution to delete two adopted street names from the official street name map. Is there a motion?
Move to adopt.
Hey, it's been moved and seconded. Okay, so this is for Mercer Ranch Road, which I'm sure Baxter can speak to and. Leahoe?
Leahoe.
Leahoe Circle? Okay. All right.
So speaking for the first one on the removal of the Mercer Rancher, I really do appreciate this. Thank you so very much. Um. And also I do realize that this is a public access. Well, but there's no public exit. So I mean, this is, you know. Like right away through here, you I don't own the road or anything. But I really appreciate you taking down the sign because. Don't want people trying to get to my house. On that road. It was bad enough as it is and I'd use it, but I know somebody else. Yeah, I really appreciate your doing this. So do I have to excuse myself from voting because um this concerns me?
Um, we can uh. We actually have a quorum without you, so.
Yeah.
So if you want to be excused, that's.
Oh, wow. Wow. I should probably excuse myself from voting on this. There won't be any problems down the road.
Yeah, that seems reasonable.
It could always be redeemed again in the future.
Uh, so what is the? For for these other, so so this is a public ass access.
Correct.
Easement. So um, so it's a little different than just long driveways. Um, what are the rules for long driveways? Just to remind us.
A long driveway is named if it is like over a thousand feet long and it accesses three or more property or residential or commercial structures. We require a driveway to be named. Um, but for this one. It's all state land until you basically get to the Mercer's place. Um, and the reason why we're kind of removing it too is that um. It's kind of also a dangerous road that we don't want to encourage people to try to drive down it and it's not the way that he actually accesses house. Um, and it so it doesn't really need to be named because there's nobody else along it. And it could be renamed in the future as if the state ever does develop it or not. Um, I think for the most part, a few locals might use it because it did lead up to Beaver Pond kind of closer to Ignite, but other than that. There's not a lot of reason for anybody to drive down it.
Okay. I, yeah.
So sooner or later in the future, I'm assuming the state will do something with it because it's in the. School section. You know, southeast corner of every section thirty six, the school section. So sooner or later, I assume the state's gonna figure out something to do with reduce revenue. But just so it it will get taken care of sooner or later.
And the only reason it's a public easement is because Baxter applied for it. Because that's like his emergency exit road. Otherwise, the state wouldn't have ever made it an easement because it's only used by him occasionally.
Okay. Um, I and I I had somebody ask. Just yesterday um. About a. Their driveway now has a road sign on it.
Mm hmm.
And they were wondering if. That would be taken off or or what they should do about something like that.
If it's a named driveway, they'll have to contact me. Um, because um, yeah, we're not going to just start randomly taking down signs because. We did put them up for a specific reason. Um, a lot of them was more as driveways were over a thousand feet long for some individuals. Um. Or it could potentially, it does access potentially three properties, maybe not three structured or built. And it was just something to kind of get ahead of it. So that way in the future, I didn't have to change somebody's address. Um, because when we started this project, a lot of people were hesitant to have to change their address. So if we kind of get ahead of it now that it's kind of named um. That. I won't have to change the address in the future.
Okay. Any other comments on this one? Okay. Um, roll call vote and. Baxter's gonna recuse himself. Steve Jones?
Yes.
James Ward?
Yes.
Eric Howgan?
Yes.
Cass Antech?
Yes.
Manus? One recuse. All right, and then next is. P C twenty three fourteen. And this is adopting a street name for unnamed streets for the official street name map. Is there a motion?
Move to adopt.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, so this is.
All right, maybe during the first public comment, Kyle was trying to make a, a comment that no one called on him.
Oh.
So he's on.
Is it, is that about this?
Yeah.
Okay.
He's my partner.
Okay.
So he's on there.
Then we also have Daryl, Chris B, he's here too.
Okay. All right, is, is Kyle there?
Uh, Kyle's on.
Kyle, can you? Make a comment on this?
Sure, yeah, uh, thanks for, um, the time and consideration for one of the names that we, um, supported Wilderness Way. Um, we would like to see if, if there's any possibility of having it be one of the other names that we selected. Um, we really like either using Denali TV Drive. I know that's, Denali's been used in the borough a bunch and, and that may not be possible. But, um, our second choice would be Adventure Way, um, instead of Wilderness Way. But, um, we'd be happy with Wilderness Way as possible. Um, we do have both properties. I mean, this road easement is actually within our property lines, um, and we'd be the only addresses on the street. So simply because it goes from Auto Lake to Mackey Road. So, um, that's the only, uh, comment that I have on that. Thank you.
Okay, and what was that? The, was it Adventure?
Adventure Way, correct.
Way was one of the suggestions? Are those, um. Are those things that we could consider, or do you need to locate the data base?
Adventure Way is available, um. I chose like Wilderness because, uh, it's also how the Lakeview Inn has accessed their property for over thirty years, is through this driveway. Um, and I, in order to kind of make it, and that's going to be their current thing, I'd have to kind of adjust the road a little bit if I were to address them off of that too. So there might be two businesses off of it because the other portion of Mackey Way is a pretty tight one and you can't get buses up it.
Mm hmm.
And that would be their legal, that would have been their legal access, but, um, they haven't been using it. They've been using this driveway for years. So that's where I kind of made the compromises. Neither business had like their business name in the road name.
Mm hmm.
Um, but Wilderness was close to, um, when I asked the Lakeview Inn people, they had picked like Forest as a potential name.
Mm hmm.
Um, and I figured both of them are kind of treat.
Mm hmm.
Um, but yeah, Adventure Way is available, um.
And Daryl, do you have a comment?
I guess so, um, I, I was just kind of, you've used the road for, and it's not a driveway to grow, I understand this, for thirty years. And we, we, our number one was, uh, obviously Lakeview.
Mm hmm.
That was denied, and I don't know why. But then we kind of went the theme of Mackey Elias, kind of that whole theme and, and you know, the lake used to be called Finn's Lake. Not before it was called All of Potters Lake. So I, I don't know why our choices were to not have any. Um. But Wilderness Way is fine with us, it is what it is. But I do, I, I do want to just clarify that that is a road that we've used for thirty years. And it's not a driveway, and if. I, I feel like one of the emails that we received, uh, said if Mackey Way was ever developed, that would be our road. That'd be quite the circuitous route to our business, uh, even if it were developed. Um, this is a, this is only used for thirty years.
Mackey Way would be your address because the road that you do go through, that does go through Denali ATV is a thirty foot road easement. Um, but like how your property is aligned is your property doesn't actually adjoin this easement. And so basically by naming standards, it's, it's the properties that affront it, get the vote on what the street names are. And unfortunately, your property actually doesn't, uh, join to this road that you've been using. But I did recognize that you have been using it and I tried to find a compromise. And I tried to, um, I recommended when it first came that you guys talk to each other. Um. Yeah, I told both of them, I told Tara when she applied for an address, hey, you know, if you want to name this, talk with Kyle. You know, go talk with an L A T V, find out if you guys can come up with a road name you guys like. Um, and I think you guys just miss each other, season's going on. And then I told Kyle the same thing when he talked in, you know, go ahead. You guys can get together, talk about it if there was a, if you guys wanted a road name. Um, I got emails from both parties and I don't think either one of you guys were able to meet up and talk with each other. So I just kind of compromised in the middle, um. And tried to make it because I know both of you kind of use it, that neither one of you could use your business name. Although Denali is used already, so that was kind of out of it for being a duplicate. Um.
Like you.
You have like, like you Finn, um, and then Forest and then Denali A T V's.
I just don't, the email that I kind of read just kind of said, well, if this Mackey Way ever gets developed, almost that we have to use that. And that's, that's roads road, and that's the fastest way in, Mike.
No, it's not, you have to use it, but that is technically your legal access. So that is what you'd be addressed off of.
Of. This road?
Because this road is actually between Mackey and Auto Lake, so it's kind of a connector between the two roads. And that's why I was saying is basically your property has shifted just enough that it actually doesn't align with the road easement that you actually use. Um, but. If the road was developed, your address would actually be based off of Mackey. Whether you use it or not is up to you.
And you'd make a right at the bottom of Wilderness Way. If that's what the name is, you'd make a right and your property would affront that Mackey Road, right?
It would.
Okay, so you just drive down this and you run right into it.
Wilderness. At the junction of Wilderness and Mackey, which has an S. Which, I mean, even if it was thought, we wouldn't use it.
Mm hmm.
Okay, so.
Okay.
What do we think about the, like, if going between Wilderness Way and Adventure Way?
I would choose Wilderness.
We prefer Adventure Way, but, yeah, we, we don't want to make a big deal out of it. Uh, we're just trying to have something that's reasonable.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Kyle?
Kyle?
Yeah, I mean, we, we selected Wilderness Way as one of our choices, so, um, if that's better for, uh, Tara and Daryl, then we're fine with that too.
Okay. All right. Okay. Yes.
I'm moved to change. And, oh, it is.
It is.
So, yeah, we're just.
So. All right, I think we can vote. Roll call vote, please. James Ward?
Yes.
Eric Howgan?
Yes.
Baxter Mercer?
Yes.
Steve Jones?
Yes.
Cass Antech?
Yes.
Manus. Great. All right, review of draft ordinance, amending generally borough code. Five point two five. And I think this is just changing things to aligning with what happened at the last election. Correct?
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, yeah, this is for your review. And because it does speak to planning commission composition. But yeah, it does basically, um, codify what the voters put in place and the assembly put in place. Um, so, um, feel free to make any comments about it and would take those to the assembly. But it, you know, it doesn't require an action this evening, it's for review and it will be intro, the plan is that it will be introduced by the assembly at their next meeting after.
So and this sets the term limits for, or the, the term expiring dates for all the different seats. Starting in January.
Correct. And it accommodates those, you know, the seven seats we currently have. The code language is that the commission shall consist of a minimum of five members. And, um, with additional seats identified as optional. And so, yeah, you've got the five, the five and then the two optional.
Okay.
And maybe I'll also just point out that there is a, a change that, uh, on the second page on the back. Um, to be, better align, um, the way the commission works with the way the assembly works, and that is that after an ordinance or resolution is passed, resolution in this case. Um, it's the signature of, of the mayor. And, you know, we've been doing the signature of the presiding officer for the planning commission, but not the assembly.
Hmm, that's interesting.
Um, we'll just align it with the way it works with the assembly.
Okay.
And it's easier to get the mayor's signature.
It, it tends to be, yes.
In terms of availability.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, that's good. Okay.
Maybe.
All right. And. And then we're back to public comments.
I'd like to make a public comment if possible.
Thanks, Kyle.
This is just in support of, um, the Auto Lake name continuing all the way down to the end of Auto Lake, um, that was discussed earlier in public comment. And maybe, um, considering just having Mackey Road be the connector between Elias and Auto Lake Road. Um, I do live on that road and our street name did just change and, um, it is confusing. Um, if the name is going to stick with Mackey Road, I would, uh, I talked to Marshall about this, but I would recommend the D O T putting a stop sign or a yield sign or something like that because there is, um, a big intersection there and a lot of the, the people that live in that intersection have young kids, including myself. And, um, people fly through that intersection because they think the road continues on down, um, as the pavement shows. And, um, there's been some almost accidents with people coming and going from houses and the fat truck coming up the boat launch and people coming down the trail, uh, that is Mackey Road. So, um, I'd like to see it just continue to be Auto Lake Road all the way down and then have Mackey continue up the hill and over to Elias. But, um, that's my recommendation and, uh, my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, um, commissioner comments. And, um, just remember that we got a, um, comment from Joe Garner, so if you want to address um, what, what he was talking about, this would be a good time to do that. Um, okay. Commissioner comments, Steve, you want to start?
Um. I, I would like to, because of what we discussed at the meeting before we went on our walk last time. I would like to bring up, uh, the parts of the code that deal with, uh, private easements, easements in general. So we can just have that discussion and see if we actually want to have private easements in the borough or whether we don't. Because it's kind of a mixed bag right now, and I think we need to be more definity one on that issue. So there's less ambiguity about what's going on.
So you want to look at that for code?
Yeah.
Okay.
As, as future new business.
Okay. Um.
Oh, and, uh, you know, we continue, the McKinley Village area continues to work on a area fire plan. So, which is a good thing. I think we're going to have a local, uh, get together, community get together to discuss what we can do as individuals to help pardon and, you know, because, you know, with the amount of dead pe, beetle kill trees, it's getting pretty, um. We're having a wet summer. So it's not too bad, but if we have a dry summer, it's going to be really a bad deal.
Mm hmm. Okay. Thank you. Baxter?
So how? Because I'm just slightly unclear here. I'm being clear. How do we resolve this? Uh, Mr. Coleman, I guess.
I would say if you want to fix Auto Lake Road, let me know. I could bring it as a resolution at the next meeting.
So that would be the same as what? Kyle was talking about basically.
I think most people have assumed Auto Lake, if you're driving down, you just continue driving and it kind of dead ends at the West Falls property. Kind of at the end of Auto Lake, and that's just what it's historically been known as, and that's kind of how it's paved. Um, now with addressing, our thing is, is to make roads as continuous as possible because one of the things is, is eventually if Mackey Road ever got traded, you'd have to then have a street sign that has arrows that, you know, Auto Lake Road goes to the right and then Mackey Road would go like to the left. Um, because otherwise that gets to a point where you're driving down a road and all of a sudden in the middle of it, the road name changes. Um, right now, you know, and that's the thing is that's how the subdivision was plotted was with kind of these three names. And so that's just how I adjusted it. Um, but and the biggest problem right now is a lot of our roads are not built. And so, yeah, it looks kind of odd in a lot of areas for like adjusted street names that people have assumed is what they were. Um, like this subdivision didn't actually have any street names. It wasn't plotted with, with any names. It's just how it was constructed. And so that's what people assumed is the road continued because. Uh. Because otherwise this would have been like a T intersection, basically. Is that you come to it, you'd have to stop and then you could either go left or right. And then the boat launch was straight. And until this summer, the boat launch actually wasn't used that often. But now that there is, you kind of have, it's more of a four way versus a three way kind of street.
Okay.
I don't know how to resolve this.
So, so, but we could bring this up at the next meeting for.
Yes.
A resolution. Okay, so that's new business. Okay. Eric?
Um, my comment starts with a question because the rain was loud on the road. You had went to the other meeting and you said there was some discussion about the lignant, lignite subdivision and a five hundred foot setback. Can you explain that again? Sorry.
Um. One of the, first of the public comments is, um, concerned with the fact of the subdivision being so close to the airstrip. Um, traffic. Pedestrian, children, noise, animals such as that. It was also brought up, possibly moving it back, uh, when the assembly members brought up the fact that there should be a five hundred foot buffer between the airstrip. And, and with subdivision was. So. So that was a, I, I, I have no idea what the status really is, you know, when the FAA approves as airstrip. Or when that was, that was put in there with the property, when it's surveyed. But I think it would be slightly unfair to require us to put a five hundred foot buffer on one side when there's not any more coastal, there's people living within a shorter distance on the other side. I mean, if you're really concerned about safety, I assume we do both deal. But that was kind of.
Oh, it's brought up.
Right, so we brought up, but travel and places when we looked and when it's. Basically, much problem.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
One of the considerations is also the bottom half of their airstrip is actually on Berlin.
Uh, well.
That would.
The one closest, going towards the highway.
No, so the, like, the KJ field one is also.
Oh, okay.
Like on Borough property to the end.
Right. And if you were to go by what the state claims as RS two, four, seven, sevens, it crosses the airstrip there, which would supersede the right of the airstrip earlier.
Now, that's the condition of Lignite.
So, it does go across there.
But you can reroute those, right?
Can, but you have to get state approval.
And it has to be of the same thing or better.
It, it was better.
Or, or better. So if you can ride a bicycle across there, if you were to put something around that, it would have to be the same condition of a bicycle path and just access whatever you need to do.
Okay.
So far, everybody's pretty well bouncing around. Not. Fault, the state hasn't really enforced that, but that is on the books. Not fault the state hasn't really enforced that, that is on the books.
Okay.
That trail is on the books?
Yes, it is.
How long has that been on, do you know?
Uh, I don't know. I think they brought dozers and stuff through there. I think if I remember right, I told me the first time you brought a dozer down through there, the lignite was uh nineteen twenty-four.
So what about all the other established trails um through that area? Uh, as far as building or dividing it up?
They're on the same same problem. Somebody else have it. The state ever gets around to start enforcing this.
And I I do think that when we submitted our plan as a commission, it was just kind of rough drawings of what we were thinking of. Those existing trails were brought up on our walks that we went through and. People use them for snow machine and then skiing, so they were considered as, let's try to keep those as green spaces or intact so that. That traditional access for skiing and snow machine can still be used, so. We'll look at that when we when we get that plan back from the um the engineering firm for sure.
And that's happening next month, right? That's our work session for next month.
Um, yeah, to Eric's point, yeah, that was uh something we asked of the design firm was to incorporate. Um, you know, the the continued use of those trails is part of part of um uh conceptual plan for the area. And then to process Teresa's here and has been very helpful in this effort and. Next steps. Madam Chair, was that your question about next step?
Yes, next steps. I'm because I'm looking at the, we have a work session next month. And I'm assuming that's what we're looking at is the conceptual plan.
Yeah, so the hope is that we'll be meeting with the engineering firm next week um to. Hopefully get across that finish line for the September work session to have a conceptual plan for that area. To present to the planning commission.
Okay.
So that's the goal. Um, we'll see, that's the goal, meeting that timeline, so.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about the uh? The land that there's been some proposal about building a regional airport. Where is that?
It's north of the transfer station.
So i- in my comments, I expressed how I don't think that that would be even be a legitimate. Um, effort based on the flight restrictions that clear to be bringing large aircraft in. To a regional airport. Would it, would it be reasonable to consider that as a? Uh, potential area to subdivide?
So, um.
Yeah, you can go ahead, but I've got some comments too, but if, go ahead. The classic, it goes back to classification for one. Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Um. Yeah, the the, Mr. Garner, the the area that we've considered may be good and. For a potential Healy, you know, regional airport is state land. That's not borough land. That's 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 not a place that we can develop. Um, for residential subdivision and we also, also there is um. Not yet kicked off an aviation planning process for um the Denali Borough area um. That would evaluate questions like whether that would be a good place for a regional airport. Based on all conditions, including um flight restrictions from clear, so that's all to be evaluated in the future.
And if I can extrapolate on the DOT plan that's forthcoming, it's a Denali area airport study, which is. Focused on looking at the five existing DOT airports in the borough, uh Healy, Summit. Gold King, Cantishna and Clear. Um, and part of that study will. Assess those locations on whether they warrant future future federal investment, especially the ones that fall under the FAA perby, which is. Healy River and Clear. And if they do not warrant future in that federal investment, you know, based on current hurdles that exist. Namely at the Healy River, then a recommendation from that study could be to consider an alternative location. Um, but the study is not focused at choosing an alternative location for an airport. It is. Looking at if it would be a recommendation to replace an existing airstrip, so. I'm happy if you wanted to reach out to me later, happy to offer more information on DOTs and all the area airport study that they'll be kicking off.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, alright.
I'll finish my comment with. That was all, thanks.
Okay, alright. Okay, and um and Mike, let's see, I'll go to James Ward for comment next.
Hey, uh, good evening, everybody. Good to see everybody. Um. Yeah, jumping right into this KJ Field Road and subdivision question. Um. Yeah, it's it's an interesting question, definitely having a little bit of a approach distance on the west side of the airstrip might be. A good idea. Uh, the maps that I remember us looking at in our in our planning and my my CRAN drawings. Uh, most of my ideas didn't go so far. West as to as to really get into that space on the west end of the KJ Field Road runway. Um. But you know, there's a lot of borough land out there to the to the west and then to the southwest, so. Um, good question for the future, and I think for now, I'll I'll stand by to hear what the. What the engineering study uh has drawn up for us and uh and we'll certainly keep that comment in mind. Uh, another thing I was thinking of is that, you know, like like Baxter mentioned, we have the houses on the south side of the airstrip. That very much use that space. They're they're quite close to the to the action and um. You know, it would be in a perfect world, it'd be great if the houses on the north side of this airstrip might have kind of the same. Affinity for the airspace or for the uh for the airport there. Problem with that being, obviously, you can you can set up the land, but you can't force the buyer of the land to to buy a cessna, so it's a. You know, maybe there's something we can do to. Set up those lots in a way that's more conducive to to respecting the airstrip, but. I I hear the comment and and I'll be considering that as we as we keep moving forward. Great meeting and thank you for uh. Public participation and and that's the end of my public comment. Thank you.
Alright, thanks, James. Um, and Joe, I would like to um just encourage you to come to next month's meeting. And or, you know, call in just like you are and um and just. Uh, work sessions tend to be more informal and we're we're look, going to be looking at the um at what. Um, the design firm comes back with and um and I would encourage you to um. Be a positive part of the planning and and not think that um we're in any way against. Uh, pilots with this. Um, we definitely respect the fact that there's an airstrip there and we want to. Make things safe for everyone, so. So, um. That's the end of comments.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'll attend, definitely. Thank you.
Hey, perfect. Alright, and um so planning commission report to the assembly. It's at the McKinley um Community Center next month, September thirteenth.
I have a ferry reservation in the thirtieth.
You're gonna.
So I can do get my boat out of water and make it back for the meeting, our meeting.
Oh, okay. You're not going to be here, okay. Alright, anyone else? Um, wanna take that one?
I'll be at work soon.
Alright, I can do, I can do that. Alright, and um. Alright, this, so the time and place of next meeting is Wednesday, September twenty-seventh. And that's a work session regarding the lignite area residential subdivision planning. Um, do we want to put these? Does the staff have time to prepare? Um, these two new business items that we were discussing, the um. A look at the private easements. Um, section of code and the resolution for the Auto Lake Road.
As far as on where, we don't actually have a private easement section. We just. Grant an easement, I think is all it says, whether it's private or public.
All that language. Yeah, but it well, it's come up twice now. At private easements have been granted and each time it's come up, it's created a problem for us. So I think we need to address private easements. And whether we issue them or not, or whether an easement is automatically. A public easement, you know, we just haven't done this. We need to, we just need to take a look at it and decide where we're going.
I agree. So with that. Would we do the um? The regular meeting first so that we have a short regular meeting and get that out of the way and then do the work session like we did at McKinley Village?
Usually it's been you do the work session and the regular meeting is follow, so that way you can. You don't have like a timeframe for your work session unless you want to have a. Cap on how long you want to have a work session. We just did it the other way because we're going to be walking around. Um, right, like McKinley Village, usually it's always been we do a work session before the meeting and then that. Allows you to is if you're going to take care of some business in the meeting with it. Um, or make a few other decisions to continue work session or bring stuff forward. You have the regular meeting follow.
Okay, so so then with that, could we put on the agenda for the regular meeting? Something about like. I don't know, whatever we're going to do after. To to do follow-up from the work session, I mean, like, because I I guess the next step would be. Uh, a public open house or some kind of something. I don't know. For the lignite subdivision.
But that would be like the month following, right?
Right, yeah, but I mean, it's not on the books yet, right? So. And the month following actually is the road.
Roadwork.
Roadwork session, so so we might have to.
We picked a date to get it on the calendar, but we don't know that we'll actually have that designed back. And um, like, I know Tracy and I have provided some feedback to design a last step, but we don't, we don't have anything today. And hopefully it will happen by then, um but I guess I would kind of like. Do a hopeful to be determined that we have that back. And then as a, um, I I guess that would be part of the discussion of the work session is like what. I mean, you might look at it, hate it, go, I, we don't even know. That we want to have a next step, you know, or you you might love it, go, it's perfect. Okay, what would be the next step? So I guess I I would say that would be part of the discussion at the work session is to decide what. What you feel the next step would be and how soon that next step takes place.
Okay, and then how does that work with having a work session and then following it up with a. Public meet, I mean, the public meeting and you want to do something because. It might not be on the agenda.
Got to be on the agenda.
Right, so put something on the agenda about the lignite subdivision.
If you want to take action on it.
If there's a possibility.
And then if we don't have anything to do, even.
We actually still don't have to go to this property, so there is like only so much that next step. Would be, we could draw as many plans as we want, but until we actually have title, they're like. We could have a thousand pictures before we get title, and so there's there's some. Discussion of what that next step would be realistically.
So nothing should probably go on the agenda as far as the work session go. I think we do the work session. Hack out our notes and then that's it, that's done and then whatever.
And and we could just put a kind of a generic placeholder to of like continued discussion. Or continue follow-up on the lignite subdivision discussions, you know, just have a generic thing if.
Yeah.
If you wanted to take action or.
Okay, yeah. That sounds good. Alright.
I wasn't sure if you made a note that that Wednesday is the fourth Wednesday of September, not the third. Um, that because of, I think at your last meeting, there was a discussion that there wasn't going to be a September meeting. Um, and then with, because Marshall will be at the planning conference, and any planning commissioners are, um. But then when we thought we would be have this conceptual design to review, that's why we went back to, well, how about a work session? Not on the standard planning commission schedule, but before November. Um, which that last week is when Marsh and I are both available, so just making sure that. That date was called out as.
Okay.
On your normal schedule because and because it was initially going to be just a work session.
The twentieth to twenty-third is the conference.
Yes.
So that's a pretty busy month.
Well, right now you have you have potentially your two regular medium agenda items if you're wanting to revisit your. I guess it'd be the subdivision code to find out private easements. And then if you're wanting to have a resolution with the change for Auto Lakes and Rome alignment.
Yeah, okay. Alright, and then. Then the next meeting after that is the October eighteenth joint work session with the assembly to talk about. Road maintenance for subdivisions.
And our grant programs.
And grant. Okay. Right, and that is all the business that we have, so I. I'm adjourning the meeting at seven thirty-three.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, James. Good night.